Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four uh work session of the Town Board of Newcastle. The board has been in executive session discussing matters of hiring, contracts, and legal advice. May I have a motion to enter into the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Good evening, everybody. We have a bit of an audience here. Um, we're going to start off the work session by discussing the issue of flags of other nations. We've had, in my experience here on the town board, the raising of two different flags. We've had the raising of the Ukrainian flag and the Israeli flag. I'm not sure if the town board has ever raised other flags of other nations, but I do know that um, I don't remember if we had a vote on the Ukrainian flag. We certainly had a resolution um to support the Ukraine. We had a resolution in support of Israel, but we did not have a vote on the raising of the Israeli flag. And uh we don't have a policy either. So we're looking at, we're looking at this in that context and not just discussing the Israeli flag, but just the concept of raising the flag of other nations. And just to start us off, um since we don't have a policy, I just want to state that we will be looking at a policy going forward. So we're not ready to do that today. We don't have a draft of a policy, but we will be looking into that, you know, pretty, pretty soon, ne- either next week or in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a policy to look at. As for the Israeli flag itself, um, I'll put that in the context of um speech, because people have asked us to put, put up flags or to take down flags. And so what the town board cannot do is create a public forum, because if we take requests for town property, then we open it up as a public forum, and then we would have to take requests from everyone who asks. So the context of all this is that these are town board decisions. Uh, we don't want to be in violation of free speech. So, um, but I can't say that it was a town board decision to raise the flag, although we, we didn't object. And I think we're glad that we did raise the flag for a time. So it was raised to support Israel after some of the worst atrocities uh experienced by the Jewish people since the Holocaust. We raised the flag to support Israel, to support our Jewish community, to support the hostages. Um, the Israeli flag went up at the New York State Capitol, the governor's mansion, and in some other local governments and around the country. Uh, to us, the Israeli flag has represented our ally, the only democracy in the Middle East. It is a symbol for seven million Jews, two million Christians, Muslims, Dru- Druze, Armenians, and other religions, and other ethnicities who live together in peace. It's the home of the only growing Christian community in the Middle East and Muslim sects that are persecuted elsewhere in the Middle East. There are many Arabs, including Arab women, in the medical and legal professions. A Muslim judge sits on the Israeli Supreme Court. There are Arab members. The flag represents all of them. And there are many examples of people of different faiths living in peace in Israel. I'm sure we can have a lot of anecdotes. Um, I'll tell you a personal anecdote of mine. My husband has a cousin in Tel Aviv who is the granddaughter of a Holocaust survivor. She's married to a Palestinian. We visited them ten years ago. It's not an issue. A wonderful family, happily living in peace together. That's just one little anecdote. The flags of other nations are not permanent flags. And because the flag was raised without a policy, there was not a timeline set up for it. So it's easy to raise a flag, but it's more difficult to take it down. I think that in the back of some of our minds, we thought the flag uh would be lowered when hostages would come home. The war is ongoing, and I think it seems to me that the reasons for putting the flag up are still there, but the more that the more time we have when the war is ongoing, the more attenuated those reasons become. So I've had decisions with individual board members here, uh, but I think we have to go beyond that, and it's time for us to have a discussion together. I want to say that Ali Kemtov is here with us um by Zoom. Ali is quite sick today. And so I want to thank Ali for being here with us because it's important enough. So thank you, Ali, for coming in. I know you're, you're quite ill. Um, so thank you for being here with us. So I wanted to give um the opportunity for us to have a discussion here together and to do that in public, to be transparent about it. And since we didn't have a vote, I don't think we'll take a vote, but I would like to try to reach a consensus with the board on this issue. And I would propose that we, we think of a timeframe in which to lower the flag. That is, you know, respectful of our intent. And there are other ways to support causes that we personally believe in. It doesn't have to be a flag. And so I, I, I'll just open it up and let everyone else speak.
So I'll, I'll start off by saying I support the flag. I make no qualifications to my support of the flag or to Israel. I make no apologies. That does not mean I support war and pain and hurt. Um, that all being said, there needs to be a finite time where things and people and events have to move on, because it is traumatic, no matter where you find yourself, uh, no matter whom you support, because if you support humanity, you don't want to see anyone being hurt in any way, shape, or form. Uh, I think that the flag needs to come down sooner rather than later, not just as a generalized statement, but as a real concrete time. Whether that means it comes down um hundred and fifty days, it comes down six months, uh, whether it comes down, I don't know. Those of you who are familiar with eighteen, which is Chai, which is important in Judaism, uh, which eighteen can become hundred and eighty days, but we can't keep it up there in perpetuity, and it does need to come down sooner rather than later, in my personal opinion. Um, and we need a policy, because future boards in the community don't understand what can come up or what can't come up and why. And that policy may be going forward that nothing comes up, and that may be the answer. Uh, there's a time when trying to bring people together can also bring people apart, and that's not what we want to see happen. So um I'm all for supporting moving this four wheel ball forward to take the flag down and define the parameters, if any, going forward, how a flag is raised.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. Jen, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad we're having this discussion, so thank you for that. Um, I agree with what you've been saying about why the flag went up and um that it showed solidarity with the state of Israel. After October seventh, Israel was the country that was going to find the hostages and pursue their release. Um, about half of the hostages have been released. Um, some bodies, eleven bodies have been repatriated. Um, three hostages were killed by friendly fire. A hundred and thirty-four remain. And some will be deceased. We'll find that out. Um, over the past five months since October seventh, also, you know, over twenty-five thousand Gazans have been killed. Um, and that is something that does not escape my attention and my concern. I'm also very aware that there are a lot of emotions around this in our community in several different directions, and I am very inclined to pay attention to what our community is feeling. And to try and bring our community together. Um, so I, I agree that there comes a time where the flag should come down. Um, I agree with Jeremy on the timeframe. I think a hundred and eighty days or sometime between now and then makes a lot of sense. And my goal is really to try to create healing um and discussion and togetherness and to have community members turn toward each other um in love and care and you know, to hold each other while we have different points of view and different feelings on this. Um, I think we can do all of that as a community um and keep our eyes on what happens in the Middle East and find our ways as individuals and families to support, you know, what's going on in the Middle East in the ways that we want to. I mean, I have friends who have visited Israel and have volunteered their services there. Um, people write, people create art, people make donations. Um, there are wonderful ways for us all to support the causes that we believe in. Um, and I hope that our community will continue to do that um and hold each other dear.
Thank you, Jen. That was very, very nicely said. I appreciate, appreciate all of that. Um, Holly?
And do you want me to go or did you want Ali?
Well, we'll get to Ali.
Okay. Um, so I, I thank you, Vicky, for bringing this to a discussion. I, I think that it's time that we are asking ourselves, um, if, if now or soon is the right time to lower the Israeli flag. In the immediate aftermath of October seventh, there was no question that our um Israeli allies and our Jewish community members um needed that type of support. Uh, but in the, in the time that has gone on and as the humanitarian crisis has grown, I think that um the flag being up in front of town hall is dividing our community more than it is um supporting every member of our community. And I do think that as a town board member, it's my job to respect and represent everyone in this town uh and the town itself. So I, I do support that we identify a respectful time and process to lower the flag, um pass it on to its next caretakers, and um begin to come back together as a community. I do also look forward to um defining a policy so that we're not in the position where we don't have um a plan, um, if we choose to raise a flag again.
Okay, thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Ali?
I just want to apologize that I'm not there in person. I have some sort of a virus and I didn't want to get everybody sick. Um, I understand and appreciate all the comments and concerns shared by members of the town board tonight. We chose to fly the flag of the United States' most important ally, not at the exclusion of others, and certainly not because we were looking to be controversial. But as an acknowledgement that October seventh was the worst day of mass extermination of the Jewish peoples since the Holocaust, I'd like to read comments I shared with a resident recently. Anti-Jewish hate crimes are up nationally over three hundred percent. There is no other such comparison. Newcastle is not immune. There have been multiple heat speech and antisemitic incidents at Greeley within the last year, not limited to swastikas being drawn in bathrooms. I am currently unaware of any similar anti-Islam incidents that I've heard within the community, and I am certain the entire town board would be outraged and would denounce any such incidents if they ever do occur. While I can only speak for myself, I fundamentally reject any conversations that start with accusations of Israel committing apartheid or genocide. It's intellectually dishonest and factually incorrect. My heart breaks when I think of the destruction, inhumane conditions, and the loss of innocent lives due to this war. At any stance that doesn't first demand the release of every innocent Israeli hostage and acknowledge that Hamas broke a ceasefire on October seventh are disingenuous at best. Finally, but most importantly, I am married to a first-generation Jewish-Egyptian-American. My family can trace their roots back many generations to Egypt and Iraq. My in-laws were violently forced out of Cairo in nineteen sixty-eight and became religious refugees as the Egyptian government became more extreme and less tolerant of religious and ethnic di- diversity. The Middle East was once a region full of Christians, Jews, and Muslims, living mostly peacefully together. This history has almost entirely been erased. I know firsthand what Jews in the Middle East have endured and continue to endure. Israel, the only democracy in the entire region, faces unprecedented attacks from Hamas, ISIS, Hezbollah, and other Iranian proxies, while Jews globally ignore anti-Jewish rhetoric and violence not seen since Nazi Germany. There will never be a perfect time to take down the flag. We do need a policy going forward, and our intent was never to offend or divide. I would like the opportunity for the flag to come down honorably and ceremoniously, but it does feel wrong to remove the flag while there are still innocent hostages being held in tunnels in Gaza and anti-Zionist marches in our town. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on the matter.
Okay, thank you, Ali. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to be clear about what everybody thinks. So, Ali, I'm not clear whether you, how you feel about taking down the flag, you know, lowering it, and I, I, the thought, and we haven't discussed this, but the thought is to give it to our local rabbis. I, you know, we, I and some of us have had discussions with our, with our rabbis from local temples who um have been discussing this with us and are willing to take the flag from us. But, so Ali, I just wanted to be clear, are you agreeing with a consensus of about a hundred and eighty days for lowering of the flag?
I'm open to considering a variety of options, yes. It feels, it feels wrong to me. I would like to keep it up to all of the hostages on home. I know that that's not um the consensus view, and
Okay.
I like the way I'm, I'm, I'm working with everybody on the town board, and I'm open to comments, but that's just my personal view.
Okay, yeah, and that's fair. We're all here with personal views and uh, and that's, you know, we want to hear that. Um, and I, I wish that we could all know when the hostages will come home. And I, I don't want to say what could or couldn't happen. We have no way to know when that would be. So we're not taking a vote, we're not putting a date on the calendar, but there's a consensus at least among four of us, perhaps five, that a hundred and eighty days sounds like a good time?
From October seventh?
Yes, from October seventh. Um, I just want to be clear that this is a town board decision. That's why I talked about a public forum, creating a public forum before. It's a town board decision. Um, and I know that people will have all kinds of opinions about whether to take it down or not, when to do it or not. But from our perspective, I'm hearing that a hundred and eighty days is the right time. Um, it's a very difficult decision because the hostages aren't home. I hear you, um, Ali. There's something really um difficult about it. I would say that there are ways to show support for the hostages that are not necessarily shown by flying the flag. The flag could mean so many things to so many people. So I would, I would like to show support for the hostages, but it doesn't have to be with the flying of the flag. That, that's, that's just my opinion. But it looks to me like we are deciding without taking a formal vote. You know, there was no vote before, but we don't need to do that. We will look to lowering the flag at around the one hundred and eighty day mark. So.
I like that that's a meaningful number.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Okay, then. All right, we will move on to our next topic.
What quarter financials?
Okay, feels wrong to move to fourth quarter financials after this, but let's, let's go.
Rob?
You're on, Rob.
Holly?
All right, uh, good evening Supervisor Tip and board members, and uh probably the biggest crowd I've ever had. Fourteen years, and I'm certain you're all here just to hear what I have to say. Um, what I do have for you this evening are uh my projections on the fourth quarter end of year financials. Um, and I will just point out, these are my projections. We haven't closed a year yet, um, and we have our audit in about three weeks. So you'll get audited financial statements probably sometime in May or early June, and uh we'll finalize those numbers. Um, so tonight I'm just gonna give you a broad overview. Um, over the last couple of years, the financial updates that I've given were a little um a little more sporadic than they had been in the past, so we're gonna try to get back on a normal schedule of quarterly updates from board. Um, so I'll just draw your attention here. Um, up on the screen, from uh left to the right, we have the four major funds that I'm gonna review. Um, we have the general fund, the water, highway, and then the revenue fund. Um, and I'll point out a couple of things. The darker blue columns, those are the revenue. Um, the lighter blue columns are the expenses for the year. The small little black bars are the appropriations of fund balance that we used in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And um the small, smaller gray bars are unfortunately an adjustment that um through the auditors, we're gonna have to make due to our um really difficult year we had with our health insurance this year. We're a self-insured program, and um we saw our rates spike significantly this year. Um, so the take-
Wait, Rob, I'm sorry. So we didn't get this. So this is the first time
Yep.
we're seeing this, right? So the, can you explain the gray, the gray bar and what where the adjustments came in, what funds they came in?
So they're across all funds. If you see, there's a little gray bar on the top of the uh light blue column for each of them.
Okay, unfortunately, my eyesight is not, I can't really see all those numbers. Um.
Okay, I mean, I, I can read every number off to you, but typically that puts people to sleep. I was, I was just trying to give you a visual.
No, the bar, I can see, I can see the general with, with the visuals. I just wanted to know where the adjustment came from.
Okay, so I'll go through a little bit of that.
What funds did you take the money out of?
All of them, all of them. So the health insurance affects all the funds, uh, well, the four major funds, because we have staff employees in each one of those funds. So that's a, a um personnel cost that is allocated across all the funds.
Okay.
So the highlight of this screen is that uh the dark blue, which is revenue, the light blue is expense. If the dark blue is higher than the light blue, we're gonna see a surplus for the year. Um, the, in the general fund, we've got, you see, the uh dark blue is higher than the light blue. It's by about one point eight million dollars. And I'll go through a couple of the drivers for that, but that lets us know we're in a pretty good position. Um, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the little black bar, that's the fund balance that we allocated during the uh budget process. So this just lets us know we're actually not gonna need to dip into any of that fund balance. Dark blue is higher than the light blue, so revenue is higher than the expenses. Um, the other fund where we see that is the highway fund. That's the third uh series of columns over. Um, and that's about three hundred thousand, about three hundred and forty thousand. We're projecting to add to fund balance there. Um, going over to the second column, that's the water fund. We are slightly overspending the water fund, expenses over revenue. Um, but that's where we have the fund balance that kicks in. You see the little black bar. So we're still underneath uh all of our expenses are still underneath that column, and ultimately we'll end up taking less than the six hundred and twenty-five thousand that we had allocated. And the far right column, the revenue, uh, similar story there. And, and these were um shortfalls that we were aware that we had. We were funding operating expenses through allocations of fund balance. We did it in twenty-three. We've also done it with the twenty-four budget. So um basically the, the gist of this screen is that we're on pace. All of our um, all four of these funds are operating at or above where we are expecting for the year. Uh, this next slide just kind of demonstrates why we needed to make that um adjustment in the uh health insurance line and ultimately affecting the uh non-spendable fund balance in, in all of the funds. And this shows our balance over the last ten years in Mepco and our health insurance. Um, and within the consortium, each municipality has their own operating fund in that. And you see, dating back to like two thousand twenty-one, we had a significant balance in there. And you look over the last couple of years, where that balance has gone. So uh a couple of functions of that. Number one, we had two years of zero. If you look at the green line going across, that is the rate of premium increase. You see, we had two years of no increase. And the balance at the time would tell you that we wouldn't have an increase, right? If we're sitting on one point six million dollars in the plan, um, we probably wouldn't need to increase it. You see, then in twenty-three, we took a three percent increase, and in twenty-four, we're gonna have to take a ten percent increase, unfortunately. So if you look back to two thousand and sixteen, a year that we had uh similar poor results, you see how we rebounded after that, and we're hoping with that ten percent increase, we'll end up rebounding um similarly going forward. Um, unfortunately, twenty twenty-three was just a, a colossally bad year um for health insurance.
Rob, um, what drives the balance? Is it what we have to pay out? The market, combination of both?
Yeah, so our health insurance, um, quick primer uh within Mepco. Um, there's, I think, nine entities in Mepco right now. We're kind of pooled together for um kind of economies of scale for our rates, et cetera. And the first seventy-five thousand dollars of each claim that is uh paid out comes from our own working layer balance. So our premium for the year is constructed by funding this working layer, and then we have an additional layer that's shared by other municipalities. And then we have a stop-loss layer if a claim exceeds five hundred thousand dollars. So um these blue bars, they represent our balance in the working layer, where we would pay the first seventy-five thousand dollars of any claim. So unfortunately, this indicates, number one, that we've had high claims, but also a high uh volume of claims as well.
Thank you.
So just showing a few of the drivers for that number, um, for the general fund and, and um the surplus we're expecting to have. The left column with the darker ones, again, are the revenue and the uh on the right side with the lighter blue, those are the expenses. So you see the one that jumps out right away at you is the interest earnings, and that was about one point one million dollars over um, over budget estimates. So uh I think we all know where interest rates went over the last probably twelve, fifteen, eighteen months. Um, when we were planning for the budget back in uh July, August, and September of two thousand and twenty-two, the rates weren't at that point, and we didn't have an anticipation that they would be that high. Um, we have the benefit of not having to need a borrow at this point, which we're not gonna pay interest, and we're earning interest on the money that we have in the bank. One kind of perfect storm uh on the, from a positive standpoint, is in two thousand and twenty-two, we had surpluses of close to seven million dollars um that added money into our bank account. Part of that, a, a large part of that was the sale of a piece of town-owned property for, um, I think it was about five point four million dollars. So that made up a significant part of that surplus. But with all that money sitting in the bank and interest rates going through the roof, interest income was much higher than we expected. Um, you also see county sales tax. Um, again, that number came in particularly strong, which was a little bit surprising with the economy, but um, you know, it was, it was higher than expectations. And you see also mortgage tax. Police protection, one of the reasons that's a little bit high is um we actually get, we receive reimbursement when uh, for example, Con Ed or Verizon does work um on town roads, and um we're required to provide police officers, they reimburse us for that. So that's where the police protection comes in. Um, couple categories in revenue that did fall short, uh, tax, interest, and penalties. Um, oddly enough, we um when we went through the interim process last year, we pretty much closed out a lot of the outstanding tax liens that we had. So uh with a smaller amount of tax liens brings in a smaller amount of tax, interest, and penalties, and, and that's what we saw in uh two thousand and twenty-three. In the other category we fell short revenue-wise was the commuter parking fees. And if the board remembers, we um through COVID, we adjusted the parking permit season a couple of different times to try to capture whatever revenue we could. And um in two thousand and twenty-two, the revenue came in in December. Well, we decided to push that back on normal schedule, and, and the renewal now is in June. The result of that is we didn't get that revenue in two thousand and twenty-three that we had budgeted. So in spite of that, we still have a, a pretty good surplus for the year, and we thought- in spite of that, we still have a a pretty good surplus for the year, and we thought that was the perfect time to kind of get back on schedule for that. A couple of line items that were over on the uh expense side that we exceeded expectations. Police salaries, um if you'll remember, in twenty twenty three, police salaries and town hall salaries, um we settled both contracts um in twenty twenty three, so uh those both come with the settlement of prior year's retroactive payments. Um so that's why those numbers show a little bit over budget. Um they were offset by contingency, we did have the majority of that uh in the contingency line, and the the board will see a request for the allocation of that contingency line next, I think, next next board meeting. Uh police off uh police overtime, that's kind of correlated over on the other side of the revenue where the police protection, so um you know, we're a little bit over in police overtime, but the the revenue more than made up for that. Um and another trend that we'll see throughout the different funds is liability insurance, we all know what happened um this year with our renewal, unfortunately, as a as a result of uh last couple of years of uh insurance claims. Uh a couple of the expenditure lines that were below budget, we had uh legal expenses, thanks Lino for uh helping control that. And uh property tax refunds were uh were lower, so that's a number we typically leave a hundred thousand dollars in that line. Um that's often hard to predict, I work with the assessor to kind of pinpoint that, but it's very hard from year to year to understand. Uh we did add a little bit this year because we have a couple of tax certs that we're about to settle.
And we don't we don't have a separate fund for, not not like, I'm used to this, I'm used to the school board, yeah, so this is different for me, so
We don't, not not like the school district, you're you're correct. Yes, so yeah, it's a
there there are no um reserve funds that we have to justify and
No, that's correct.
and estimate what the tax future tax certs would be.
Yep.
But it's a good exercise to do that kind of estimation.
It is, and I and I work with Josh on that, and that's why the twenty twenty four budget was increased to reflect a couple of certs that we knew were outstanding and that we expect to come in in twenty twenty four.
Right.
Um school district is a little more restrictive with their fund balance, so your your um general fund balance is, you have a limit on that, towns don't.
Mm-hmm.
But school districts are also allowed to reserve some funds, and and towns are not able to do that, so those just kind of reside in the general fund fund balance. Um just showing the fund balance and kind of where I'm projecting it to go um once we release the financials in in May. So you see to the far left on this um, we're about eighteen point two million, that's in the um unassigned fund balance, which is basically um unencumbered, unrestricted, um the board is able to use those funds as they need, rainy day funds, whatever they choose to do. When financial statements were released in May. When the financial statements were released last May, we had eighteen point two in the unassigned fund balance. Uh if the board remembers, towards the end of twenty twenty three, we approved uh approximately two point five million dollars of transfers out of fund balance to fund uh quite a few capital projects that we had originally anticipated borrowing money for. But because we had such a strong fund balance, we were able to um actually fund them with our fund balance as opposed to going out and borrowing money and then um incurring debt service over the next twenty or thirty years. Um so that brought the fund balance down a little bit. Um we did appropriate one point three million dollars in fund balance, that was up from eight hundred thousand um in twenty three. Uh we appropriated that in the twenty twenty four budget, and that was to help us stay under the tax gap, if you remember, we had quite a few pressures this year financially. Uh staying under the cap. Um and then uh I add back in the operating surplus that I expect from uh activities of maybe one point seven million dollars for twenty twenty three, and you get to sixteen point nine million. Again, give or take, these are my projections, the auditors may still make adjustments to these, but uh where I sit right now, that's what I'm projecting. Um showing now the highway fund, uh again, left side revenue. Uh we got reimbursements of about two hundred and eighty eight thousand for FEMA, uh we didn't have that budgeted. FEMA is difficult to predict, those were storms, I think Isaias and and Ida uh that happened two, three, four years ago. FEMA is pretty good about reimbursing us, but it does take a while, and and it's difficult to budget what year that might come in, so we did see that in twenty three. State aid that we got, CHIPS, uh there's four different categories for road paving, they actually added a fourth category in twenty four, and uh we saw a hundred and fifty nine thousand more than we were expecting. And uh dividend earnings, that that was the tail end of our prior workers' compensation policy that we had uh until we switched carriers, that was just a remainder of the dividend that we received in twenty three. Um you see over on the expense side, the road paving that increased a hundred and eighteen thousand. Typically, what we do when when we get the state aid done, refer CHIPS, when uh if it does come in more than we expected, we put that money back into our road paving. So we paved about uh I think a million and five uh in this past year in road paving, and and that was up. You know, we talk about this every year, but uh and and Jeremy, now you're the uh longest tenured board member, and you probably remember when you came on the board and we uh were paving roads in the two, three, four hundred thousand, and now we're up to about a million and a half, so uh we've been able to put that back into the infrastructure for the town.
Hopefully, the governor will put that back, the amount back, and you know, she's saying that um there's no decrease in CHIPS, but I think the amount that she's put in is less than the legislator legislature put back
Yeah.
last year, so we have a decrease in CHIPS funding. And I I just hope that they put it back to at least the same level.
Yeah. Yeah, I would like to see that for sure. Um as I mentioned in the prior slide, with the general fund, the highway fund salaries were increased, again, that was a result of a couple of years of retroactive pay. Um vehicle maintenance and repair was up a little bit. Road maintenance materials down a little bit. Um one of the really positive numbers variance wise on the expense side was snow removal overtime. And uh I don't have to knock on wood because talking about twenty three numbers, and we didn't have a heck of a lot of snowstorms in twenty three, so our uh snow removal overtime was about a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars below budget, and closely related to that was the salt uh budget, and we were about forty six thousand dollars under budget there. Uh moving now to the refuse fund, uh right side, this is a smaller budget, so you're gonna see smaller increases and decreases. Uh compost mulch and uh yard waste were both up uh about thirty nine thousand dollars. Um on the other side, the big number here, the transfer site charges, um we were about a hundred and twenty three thousand below budget. That that means that uh well, that's good news, because we have seen transfer site costs go up in the last couple of years. Um I think the amount of places that we can take the refuse has decreased, and and some of the options that we have have increased significantly in cost, so that was um we had estimated a little bit higher than it came in. And finally, the last of the four funds, uh the water fund. This is, this fund is typically um very difficult to calculate, it's based very heavily on the weather, and when we have, when we see a lot of rain over the summer, um we use a lot less water, and conversely, when it's dry, we use a lot more water. And you'll see the, when we use less water, obviously, we sell less water, and the expense side, uh it costs less too, we're buying less from New York City, we're buying fewer chemicals, it's less electricity to treat it. So over, starting all the way to the left, interest earnings, again, this will be across all funds, but water fund has about six million dollars in fund balance, so we did see a positive variance there in the interest earnings, about a hundred and fifty nine thousand. Um water sales, not exactly sure why, but for IBM, we're up about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And you see that sale of a tap, sixty four thousand, those are all the water taps that were put in over at Toll Brothers uh Chapaguan Crossing. So we saw some revenue coming out of that. Um on the flip side, on the revenue side, um overall water sales, you see Pleasantville, which is our partner in the water treatment plant, and just general metered sales were down quite a bit um this some, last summer, it was uh it was pretty wet summer. And on the other side, you see the first couple, the variable cost of water, cost of water for Pleasantville, uh the excess per capita cost, that's all costs that we pay to New York City for the purchase of the raw water, all those numbers were down, which is indicative of uh of the decreased usage. Um some of the increases we saw, just like all the other funds, salaries were increased uh due to the contract settlement. Um Pleasantville refund, that is where um uh once we audit the figures for each year, uh Pleasantville has a a share of the expenses, and and once we net out what their expenses were from their revenues, if they have any uh surplus, we have to give that back to them, so that's what that number is. And you also see, just like some of the other funds, liability insurance is up as well.
Now, I just wanna say, we have tremendous expenses with the Millwood water treatment plant, I mean, absolutely tremendous, so you know, it's not really reflected here.
No, the total budget for water treatment's about nine million dollars, so um annually, so
I mean, it looks like Right.
Yeah, to say we're off three hundred thousand here and there, it's not a huge part of the budget, I mean. Uh just showing the fund balance now and and the projections for fund balance uh for the other three funds, I showed you the general fund before. The left side is twenty twenty two fund balance, the right side of of the pair is the twenty twenty three projection. So you see the water fund down just a little bit, that would be projected because we uh we did appropriate fund balance uh in the operating budget and and the refuse fund as well. Um and then you do see in the middle, we do have an increase in the highway fund fund balance due to the surplus there, so overall, we're in pretty good shape. Uh last slide I'm gonna show you is uh just to kind of give you an idea of what I do and and how I'm watching the town's money. This is my cash flow analysis, my projection for the beginning of the year. Um so it's where I'm basically taking um all the revenue sources, all the uh cash coming in, all the cash going out, and just kind of monitor that. Um the town's in a pretty good cash situation, uh we have been for the last several years, so it's not um dire that this is to the penny, it's pretty close, but um you know, I do kind of monitor the highs and the lows, and if you look um March projected, that's some of the lower um cash on hand during the year, that's right before we start town tax collections. At that point, I have made the school districts whole um with all the money that that I have collected from them, so um you know, that that gets down to some of the lowest, and you look in like January, April, September, where we collect taxes and and um I distribute that back out the next month to the school district, so we have a higher balance of cash on hand at that point in time, but uh you know, this is just an exercise, I update this every quarter um and just kind of review where we are, but um yeah, town is in a pretty strong cash position.
Great, thank you very much, Rob, can we have a a copy
Sure, absolutely.
of this presentation, um because it's a little bit hard to see here, so we might have questions at the next meeting for you, but this was very helpful.
Yep. Sure.
Um you know, we do have a very strong fund balance, but I just have to temper that by saying we have, we were so close to the tax gap,
Yep.
and we have a lot of expenses that might not be reflected
Sure.
by this sort of presentation, and to do anything like housing in the tropical hamlet or housing in Millwood, uh I mean, that costs millions of dollars of um sewer work that we absolutely don't have, so I don't wanna leave the impression that we are flush with cash, we are very tight, very tight, I mean, we we barely made it to the tax gap, and there's so much that we need to be doing, we ought to be doing, that that we cannot.
Sure, so what's happened, I've been, this is my fourteenth years comptroller, and um you know, when I took over, the fund balance was was sub two million at that point in time, it was it was low. Um and we had a plan to bring that back up, and once we got back up to two thousand and eighteen, um we used that fund balance, allocations of that fund balance to pay for um infrastructure improvements, capital projects. Um that was the plan this time around too, as the fund balance started to peak, we had planned to borrow money and then use the some of the fund balance to pay down the debt service. Well, what we did at the end of last year is we funded the projects directly rather than borrow the money for them.
Right.
Um you will see some other projects this year that we have the same intention um to draw down some more of the fund balance and to uh to fund some more capital projects, more infrastructure for the town, um.
It's stuff that people can't see, we have very old water mains that
Yeah.
are breaking down, so there there are a lot of expenses
Unfortunately, that's not sexy, but that's uh
a lot of expenses um going forward, which aren't reflected in these these presentations, but it's important to note that they are out there. But thank you so much, Rob, it's important to have quarterly reports, since you know, it's transparent and we're responsible for for oversight of these funds, so thank you very much, and to the whole staff, I mean, a lot of people work on the budget, so we're very appreciative, thank you.
Rob, just really quickly, extremely briefly, just so people understand, if you have a little extra, we'll call it excess surplus in one fund, is it fungible? Because money is fungible, but you know, you take one fund to the other, so I think the the board knows the answer, but can you just explain very briefly about how they're allocated and how you can use it?
Sure. Right, yeah, yeah, that's a good point that Jeremy makes, that no, unfortunately, um in government accounting, fund accounting, money stays in a particular fund, so when I have a surplus in, I'll I use the example, if I have a surplus in the water fund, can't buy a police car out of it. Police car's gotta be paid for under the general fund. Um and uh water expenses stay with the water fund, ref- refuse, et cetera, highway, so no, that that is not interchangeable back and forth, um.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Um I just wanna say, I just want to, one minute before we get to the, I just wanna acknowledge our our audience. Um I know you're here probably to make a public comment, and I just wanna let you know that we are in our work session right now, I know this is very lengthy, and I apologize, um um and during work session, we don't take public comment, but we will have public comment when we get to the town board meeting. So that's just the way it works, and um you know, I just want to acknowledge that that you're here and waiting, so sorry, this is a, this is our meeting, and it's the work that we need to do for the town. Okay, um so let's go on to changes to um, no, we are at modifications to the assembly permit. Okay, so Lino, I will let you take the lead and go through the modifications
Sure.
that have been suggested, and um
Sure, thanks for the advice, Rob, as a board, so yes, what you have this evening is a discussion item uh regarding amendments to chapter ninety two, which is the chapter entitled Parade of Demonstrations. So what we've done is, you you in your earlier code, or the one books now, there is an insurance requirement, but it's only if the entity is, it maintains one of any ordinary course of business. What we did was, we proposed a draft that changes that provision, provide that for any type of uh assembly of fifty people or more, that they're required to submit uh proof of insurance showing the town of Newcastle has an additional insurer, so that is a change to subsection D of chapter ninety two dash three. Uh and the the last thing that we did, and there's a fee section, subsection F of that code, that we put in a a fee schedule, a fee five hundred dollars for the covered services that are rendered by the town DPW uh for work that's conducted after a an a assisted event, so that would be considered a charge, that would be charged the the in addition to the insurance would be that fee to cover for, you know, cost of cleanup for an event, again, uh you know, that would be part of the fee schedule, and then, you know, we have to discuss how you wanna do that, if it's gonna be just a DPW charge or any other fee, but that's the proposed DPW thing. And that's really the 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 extent of the modifications.
Okay, thank you, Lino, so these were modifications that were suggested to us based on expenses that the town incurs. Um we did have an insurance provision, we do have one currently in the code, and
You did, right.
and so that's not new, what's new is that it it applies to everyone instead of certain people.
Yeah. Right, the 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 provision that's on the books now only applies to entities that maintain a an insurance policy in their ordinary ordinary course of business.
Um
So we we took that out and just said, if you're, if it's an assembly of fifty or more, you're required to obtain a certificate of insurance naming the so we took out the ordinary course of business requirement, and just put a a amount with respect to the the parade, so if it's fifty or more, you have to provide insurance.
Okay, and how, can you tell us how typical this is?
So you're allowed So you're allowed, you're allowed to have insurance, you're allowed to ask for insurance, um it's it's permitted. Uh basically, the state has a genuine interest in 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 essence protecting itself from liability from injuries associated with organized events. So you are allowed to to provide for an insurance requirement in your code, and that's permitted, and it's been upheld by the courts.
Okay, um and Jill, you did do a preliminary look into what that would mean for people who don't carry insurance but are looking to hold an event for
Right.
a few hours, and so what does that mean exactly for me?
So I I actually just went online and uh did, let's say, a a parade permit, I I did it a full day, uh you know, if you were doing a, you know, a a walk or something like that, it would only be a couple hours, but for the full day, uh one of the insurance companies of insured ended up at three hundred and thirty dollars and maybe eight cents for the day, another one ended up at two hundred and seventy two dollars. It's probably about the range, if you're doing it less than a day, it would be less than that.
Okay, I mean, I have to assume that cost doesn't go down proportionally, but let's say it's two seventy two for the day, if it's for a couple of hours, then
Right.
Okay.
They they're, you know, they must be
So maybe it's two hundred, let's say, I I don't know.
you know, fifteen insurance companies that you can shop around online, I did them, just pulled a couple straight out.
And thi- this was just kind of a survey of um for for a oh single one-off type of policy, not not
Just costs. Right, so a million dollar personal um injury, two million property damage, just generally speaking, you know, just how much would it cost someone out of pocket um if they were organizing an event of fifty people or more?
And And if someone had um insurance already, um is generally included?
Then uh then it would That would be covered under their insurance policy.
Yeah.
And that's currently what's in the code, right, they they do that, um.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the DPW fee of five hundred dollars, um and how common is that?
Uh that you do see, uh you see a fee that's associated with the cost of cleanup or the cost of services and that type of event, as long as it's clear that it is associated for, again, DPW, and that five hundred dollar fee, I believe we came up with uh about the cost of two labors that would you that we would utilize after an event for a couple of hours of uh with a cleanup, four laborers.
Our union contract requires four hours, you know, so that's what we'd have to
So that's what the number came from, that five dollar fee.
Okay, a- and is this typical in um in these kinds of provisions on parades and demonstrations, is this typical to 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 charge?
Again, in in terms of you have a supervisor, I mean, different municipalities have different provisions and different ways of doing it,
Right.
but uh there are some that do charge that type of fee as well as insurance.
All right, could you bring us examples of that?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
For a future meeting, so
Sure.
um let's see, does anyone else have any other questions regarding this? No, okay, um so at one, so what we would do with this is to, you know, we're not, we would not take a vote on this, make a decision now, this is
This is a only discussion, right?
change to a law, this is for only for discussion, we're getting information. Uh if we decide to proceed with this law, we would put it up for public hearing
That's correct.
and and take public comment and get feedback, all right, so that's how we we make decisions on, you know, local laws.
But I will find out about jurisdictions and give you an uh an idea of whether to do.
So they they would do one, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you wanna come back with that, and then are we looking to send it for a public hearing?
I don't think you can yet because it's not really finalized, so and we still have to, we still need to advise you.
Right. So we we we're gonna wait for more information from you, and we'll discuss it again.
Yeah, let's wait for approval. Correct.
Okay.
So we put it over to the fifth, just penciling it in right now, um for the work session agenda, just so that we keep track
For Nakavich? Yeah.
And if we have the answers for the board by the fifth, we'll put it back on the work session, otherwise we'll kick it over another two weeks.
Yeah, and what I really wanna know is how common are these two provisions?
Well, to to tell me, Jill, the the Rotary, they carry their own insurance for community day?
For community day, yes.
For participation policy, it's not not covered um under, there's no um insurance carried by the local club.
So you do, so they get a separate cop policy for it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they get it for the day, and that's and that's how we've, yeah.
Do you know how much it is? If you remember.
Um I I think it was about four fifty.
Okay.
But that's that's for me. But an entire, an entire event.
Does it does it does it depend, because that's a huge event.
Yeah, I mean
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a little bit, it's a, I think it's a little bit different, um than than type of event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a different kind of event than than people getting together.
But
Okay.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, the point being that it's other events have insurance that there are, they are covered.
Oh, yeah, ab- yes, ab- absolutely.
Actually, let me revise that, I think it was closer to a thousand last year.
Because you actually covered
We wouldn't.
uh smaller entities
Yeah.
that um that didn't have insurance, so backyard gardeners or things like that who wanted to have booths, the town required insur-
Oh, so this is a completely different situation.
Yeah, I I don't think that they're
Yeah, town required insurance, and the Rotary actually got picked, covered the policies for those individuals.
So you, okay. You're covering, you're recovering multiple.
Yeah. Yeah, I yeah, I don't think it's really equi- it's not really equivalent.
Okay, that's probably different, okay.
But the reason why I said it, it's equivalent in the sense that the principles exist that you need to be insured as well.
Yeah, and for all of the exhibitors at community day, if they carry their own insurance, they they um get the additional um
Yeah.
coverage for the day.
Got you.
Farmers market also carries their own insurance, their vendors carry, we do this with all the farmers.
Do we want to articulate whether this would affect block parties or anything like that?
I think block parties are under a different provision in your code, and that's what the, so those are a little different, but I could look into it, but I know there is a different provision that and then the the current law that you have on the books actually think says if you're getting a permit from a different statute, it doesn't apply, or there are different town provision, but we'll take a look at that.
They don't apply under the parades and assemblies, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will refi- oh, go ahead.
Well, just, no, just one more que- I know you're gonna kinda survey who uh who else kind of in in the county has similar types of provisions, but I I'd also um be curious to know how the fees compare if they have them.
Okay, anyone else? No, we're set, okay, so we will move on then to the next topic, um changes to storm water requirements.
Well, up again, so.
Okay, go.
Today.
Yep, and and we've got Bob Seolia, our town engineer, uh on Zoom, just been very big and reading.
Bob Seolia is on there.
Hi, Bob. Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Bob, so I'll start this off, and then we'll turn it over to Bob. So one of the things that, and I wanna thank Bob ahead of time for assisting me with this endeavor, Bob, but this has to do with our chapter one oh eight dealing with stormwater and management and erosion sediment control. So one of the things when I started here was a discussion, now, you know, stormwater is is a very big to-do here in Newcastle with respect to development, so the current metrics that we had in our code, uh one of the things that I kept hearing was it was it wasn't enough in terms of mitigation, uh cause again, the 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 trigger in order to do um whether it was stormwater management plan, uh you know, was greater than a thousand square feet of new impervious surface area. That's, you know, pavement, you know, pavement, driveway, driveway, new just new impervious uh area. So what we did was, we kinda looked at the the zone districts and changed the metrics, so we've loved the threshold, which now requires you to have some type of stormwater mitigation measure. And just to give an example, so we did it by district, so in a in a residential quarter acre, eight uh one, the R uh one quarter A district, the creation of greater than two hundred fifty new square feet of impervious area would trigger some type of stormwater management. And we kinda did that, and we did for like five hundred square feet in the half acre district, one thousand square feet in a one acre district, so there's a scale where that requires you to come in and and prepare a plan. So that's what the amendments are pretty much from a high level of the the chapter one oh eight A six, we basically changed the definition of land development activity to include those new metrics. So Bob, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Uh no, I think it's a good thing to do, I mean, just to give the board a little historical information on this code, it came in in two thousand seven, and back then,
No, I think it's a good thing to do.
um based on the models that EEC had prepared for all the municipalities uh in the AMS fours, they used the number of one thousand, I believe five hundred square feet. Um we used the five hundred square feet across the board back then in two thousand seven, but I guess it was a little bit of a pushback, and then I guess what we did back then, uh we brought it up to thousands of earth feet across all the districts, uh even for commercial property, so basically that's what we've been using for the past seventeen years. Uh now, we've seen some issues and concerns and problems with some of the smaller parcels of property, where people are putting in new impervious areas, but it doesn't seem to trip the wires, because sometimes a thousand square feet was a bit too much, and then they would be under the wires, so it did create some downstream issues, uh never and never during some construction, uh items, especially in quarter acre lots, which is about thirteen thousand square feet, so uh that's the reasoning and the logic behind breaking up in the quarter, half acre, one acre and two acre, and it's still applicable to the commercial district, I believe that's still a thousand square feet.
Yeah, I just wanna add too, there's also a look back as well, so what we did was, we amended that chapter under the enforcement penalties, that the town may go back and look back a period of three years on any new building permit to determine if any land developed activities compliance with the bridge of the chapter. So that way, people aren't going in and doing this, they're segmenting it, right, so they're building up impervious surface, and they're doing it in a way to avoid the intent of this chapter, and they're doing it kind of like piecemeal, so what this does, it allows this, it allows the building department and Bob to go in and look, well, if you're now doing things and it's exceeding that, you wear a three-year look back to go and make sure that it's addressed.
So in layperson's term, the problem is that if your neighbor does work, they do construction work, you know, they just do soil disturbance, they add impervious surfaces, and all of a sudden, and also the water table is higher, we're getting more rains, all of a sudden, you're getting flooded.
Right.
In your floods in your yard, floods in your basement that you didn't get before the renovation.
And
You know, this is what we're talking about, people are finding
Right, yeah, you know.
that they're they're being negatively impacted by construction and renovations going on around them.
And you know, we we, for example, we had a meeting last night with the RP where, you know, these issues, I mean, we can't really anything about things that have preexisted for years before these regulations came into place, but what we can do going forward with any new construction or additions, we can now address those issues with respect to stormwater and mitigation, and anything that's new or new construction, new activity, so that going forward, we can address these issues uh in 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 a better fashion, again, we really can't fix, you know, there's there are things that were built here before these regulations with stormwater, we were even thought about. So it's not our job to fix the preexisting condition, but we can fix going forward for new for new types of impervious surface and new development.
Okay. All right, so are we comfortable enough with the way this is written to put this on a for a public hearing? Just the, right, because I don't see the language in this changing, um I don't see any objection to the purpose
Yeah.
of this, I mean, and if we have objections, we'll hear it at the public hearing, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah.
Yeah. I mean, as you're
Not quite sure, but there there there's no further information that the board needs on this, is that right?
Not very.
Sure. So what we'll do is on uh the meeting on March fifth, we'll uh put it in to set a public hearing.
Okay. Right, so the first public hearing on this will be March?
Um no, we would set it for the end of March, so we'll put it on the agenda for the fifth, and we'll set the public hearing for the twenty
Right, so it needs to be on the agenda to vote on it.
To set the public hearing.
To set the public hearing.
Yeah, so
Can we do um
The twenty sixth?
Can we
Yeah, yeah, we get to the
Can we um have a resolution today to put it for a public hearing next week rather than wait?
George.
No, wouldn't, it wouldn't be next week anyway, because next week's a work session, so we would try to do
Yeah, need time to do, need time to do it too.
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, yeah, that's
It has to be in the newspaper.
Right, it has to be in the newspaper.
Okay.
Yeah, so it we we would do it next week, um and then set it for the twenty sixth of March.
Okay.
Okay.
All right then, thank you. So next we have
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you, Bob, thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um
Administrative.
Seeing as if um, Ally, is there anything you wanted to add? I don't mean to. I know you're not, you don't have to talk if you're, okay, all right, that's fine.
No, no, I'm sorry.
So uh next we have administrative items, Jill?
Right, so uh what the board has before it for administrative items is adoption of minutes and the adoption of monthly reports, both for January of twenty twenty four. Um authorization to extend the senior nutrition program contract, that's with Hubbard's Cupboards, it's our current uh provider of uh meals for our homebound seniors. Uh next is authorization to approve the agreement for Open Gov, this is a three-year agreement, sixty five hundred dollars annually, it's the uh it's Rob's uh transparency portal for his finances that we've been very happy with. Uh next is authorization to declare surplus in auction vehicles and equipments, uh specifically our DPW twenty uh twelve uh Chevy Colorado is going out to be surplused, and we'll be able to sell it at auction. Next is our authorization to award the RFP, this is for the Byram Lake Road culvert replacement, and it's for Meganaro at uh two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, as was mentioned to the board previously, we had we had estimates of uh in excess of five hundred thousand dollars, so we really did well going out to bid. Uh the next two are the authorizations to establish capital projects and budget, um one is for the Chappack parking lot drainage improvement project of six hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. The next is authorization to establish the capital project and budget for the Amsterdam Carriage House, that's for the electric heat and air conditioning project, and it's thirty five thousand dollars.
We got a grant for that, yes.
Yes, a grant is going to be, uh yes, part of a grant is gonna be covering that, a CREST grant, yes. Um and last but not least, um we were notified that um we had a a sinkhole um on a street in uh Indian Hill, and as it turns out, the drainage pipe that ran underneath the road collapsed, um so I'm when we have expenditures of over ten thousand dollars, we always let the board know about it, and the authorization to purchase this drainage pipe, it's eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy five dollars for the type, and so DPW will be out there in the spring and doing one of the um repair projects. Um we also have a couple of proposed actions from the board, uh payment of claims uh for checks dated February twenty eighth, the authorization to approve change order number one, case nexus uh not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, and authorization to uh award legal services um as a result of our RFP.
Okay, thank you, Jill.
Okay. Any questions, tell me those, please.
And uh anyone? Okay, that ends the work session, we have a motion to close out the work session and open the town board meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the town board meeting is now in session. Um I will go very quickly, announcements, Jill, any announcements, any town administrators?
No, I'll have it for the uh meetings later tomorrow.
Okay, good. Supervisors report, I just wanna say very quickly that Holly and Jen and I attended an Association of Towns annual meeting and training uh in February, it lasted from February eighteenth to to the twenty first. Um we, I don't think town board members have gone to these trainings, at least not in a very long time, so I I think these are very good sessions to attend, especially for new board members, uh and you know, we we get a chance to learn about different trends in in town government, we meet with other town officials and, you know, get a perspective on what else is going on and how they do business. And it it's very useful to have professional development in in what we do, and so I found it very um edifying and educational, and I'm glad that we went, we um we heard from Tom DiNapoli, Chuck Schumer, and Letitia James, that was really great, we we had sessions on the state budget, on fiscal oversight, on climate issues, um on site plan and zoning issues, and uh so I I appreciate everyone taking the time to go, and I thank the town for supporting educational opportunities, it's important for town board members to to be educated on what what we do here. Um do you want to say anything about the session or very quickly?
Yeah. I just appreciated going, I felt like I learned a lot, and hearing um experts ask questions is very informative, um so I did a lot of listening, and it was really good.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I was I was grateful for the opportunity to go, there were a a nice variety of learning opportunities and that we got to take advantage of, and really look forward to getting to put those to use um on a weekly basis, if not more often.
Okay, and to those who didn't go, I just wanna recognize that people have full-time jobs, and that for us, you know, it's somewhat of a privilege to be able to to just go to these things and take time off and and do that, so I just wanna acknowledge that it's not, you know, for lack of not wanting to to go, um people people do have, um it's it's getting harder and harder to be in these positions and have a full-time job, I think you're supposed to be able to do that, but I think the realities are are not quite that. Um so we thank those who do have full-time jobs for working with us as well, so. So there. Um okay, so now we are at public comment, uh for anyone um putting a public comment, I'm not sure that we have enough people here, Jill, do we want people to write their names, and as they come up, we we didn't set that up, is that right?
No, yeah, I think, I think it's like, yeah.
Okay, so will we be, we don't need to do Okay, so will we be, we don't need to do?
Go grab it.
Yeah, should, do we need to do that?
I guess we show hands, see many people.
Yeah. Okay. But uh maybe we can just start off with.
Okay.
That's funny. Okay, um we'll start. So anyone with a public comment can come up to the microphone, please identify yourself. Um and please tell us uh your place of residence, please state your address, the town you live in and your name.
Do you wanna just clarify though that we do have um two public hearings and if someone's here to comment on those, they they.
That's a good point, thank you, Holly, yeah, we have public hearings on uh local law for senior exemptions and for senior. For senior exemptions and persons with disabilities and limited incomes exemptions and a local law regarding senior refuse refuse exemption. So this is not the public comment for those local laws, this is a general public hearing. Okay, so for people who are up and are not, first I just didn't wanna waste to hold you up, so please go and sign sign in. To um the card.
This is really hard, yeah. It's it's funny, but why why don't you uh why don't you.
You know, you can start, why don't why don't you start, I I it's just that we just wanna keep track of everyone, we we can keep track of.
Go put your.
Put your name.
You're one person.
Uh hi, my name is. Is it John or?
Is the mic on?
That's it.
No, it's not.
Carrie?
Probably won't be Carrie.
Who don't?
It's not, check, 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 check.
Who's back there?
We.
Can you check the mic, please?
And they get to hear, okay.
Slight technology problem.
Yes.
Uh he can still talk, the mic.
Well, can can he be heard?
Can they can they break up?
Yeah.
Can they hear the microphone?
Can they hear me?
It's in the ceiling.
Oh, okay.
Yes, alright then, why is that there?
So do the mic drop at the end?
That's it.
Uh.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gugic, um I've lived in here in Chappaqua since um oh eight. Um I live at twenty North Place um in Hill Hall. Uh ladies and gentlemen, how many of you remember being a young child and starting the school day with the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance? And of our heart, we felt a sense of pride and reverence as we proclaimed our loyalty. The pledge symbolized our commitment to the principles of liberty and justice for all, ideals that were instilled in us from that young age. Reciting the play the pledge was more than just a ritual, it was a tangible expression of our freedom and our right to free speech. In a world where such freedoms are not guaranteed to all, it served as a reminder of the privileges we enjoyed as citizens of a democratic society. Stand before you to defend one of the inhaleable rights enshrined in both the US Constitution and our state constitution, the right to free assembly. As citizens of this great nation, we're guaranteed the freedom to peacefully gather and express our views without undue interference from the government. The First Amendment to the US Constitution explicitly provides our right to assemble peacefully without any mention of burdensome fees or insurance requirements. Similarly, Article nine of our state constitution upholds the same principle. Numerous Supreme Court cases have affirmed the importance of protecting the rights to assembly from government overreach. Requiring fees for free assembly and posting of insurance goes against the very essence of these constitutional protections and Supreme Court precedents. Such regulations create barriers and disproportionately affect marginalized communities and people and inhibit the free exchange of ideas, which is essential for a thriving democracy. The true test of a society's commitment to free speech lies in its willingness to protect the expression of ideas, even those that are unpopular or deeply disagreeable. While we may find certain thoughts aberrant or offensive, it is essential to recognize that the right to express these is fundamental to the preservation of liberty and the marketplace of ideas. By safeguarding the free speech rights of those with whom we vehemently disagree, we uphold the principles of tolerance, diversity and intellectual freedom. That form the bedrock of a democratic society. Only through open dialogue and unfettered exchange of ideas can we hope to foster understanding, challenge entrenched beliefs and ultimately progress as a society. In this era marked by heightened political division, the importance of listening to those with whom we disagree cannot be overstated. Rather than retreat into echo chambers of like minded individuals, we must actively engage with opposing viewpoints to foster understanding. And bridge the gap that divides us by listening attentively and empathetically to perspectives that challenge our own. We're not only broadening our own horizons, but cultivating empathy and respect for diverse opinions. Only through genuine dialogue and mutual respect can we hope to overcome the polarization that plagues our society and work together towards common solutions for the greater good. Therefore, I urge you, our town board, to reconsider these unjust policies and hold the sacred principles of liberty and democracy that our founding fathers fought so hard to establish. Let us ensure that the rights of free assembly remain accessible to all regardless of economic status or background. Remember the Pledge of Allegiance in your oath of office, thank you, God bless America.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, Millie Schwartz, yeah, please remember to state um your your address and the town you live in.
Can you put this?
Hello, Millie.
Can we put this down?
Can you tilt it down or can you tilt tilt, yeah.
Just, yeah.
Right.
Millie Schwartz, I live at eleven Kishel Road. So I wanted to point out that this baseless and unjustified attempt to hinder our right to freedom of assembly and association. Is a reactionary move spurred on by a fear of change and progress. Students and young people have historically been on the forefront of progressive activism and grassroots organizing. By imposing hefty fees and restrictive policies, the powers that be are effectively cutting off our access to public spaces. As a means of gathering and protest and solidarity. Students and grassroots organizers such as ourselves do not just have five hundred dollars laying around, not to mention more hundreds of dollars in insurance. These material and monetary circumstances that are being imposed upon us. Um just upon common people, organizers like everyone here, who just want to gather and associate in freedom in public. Um they're they're being imposed upon us to make the basic and alienable right of freedom of assembly virtually inaccessible to all of us. Um without access to these spaces as a means of fighting for change, all social and political progress in our town would be brought to a standstill. The spirit of freedom of expression that drives us forward would all but be halted in its tracks. Furthermore, I sincerely worry that this act will be unfairly enforced by our town leaders. Vicky Tip has clearly displayed her well documented attempts at blocking our permit for the ceasefire rally. I feel that this act will disproportionately affect progressive and radical movements such as our own. Due to the ungodly amount of effort that has already been put into previous attempts to block our right to freedom of assembly. This act builds upon harmful reta rhetoric spread by members of our local leadership. Such as publicly calling for our dispersion in the event of a ceasefire rally. These calls for use of police force against peaceful citizens of our town go against everything I and my fellow residents of Newcastle hold dear. And this act would only serve to make it more incredibly difficult to hold events in the name of positive change. And by going forward with this act and opposing these fees, the town board would clearly be showing their disdain at the common people.
Thank you, Millie. Okay, Cassiopeia, come on up.
I'm here today to defend something that I hoped that I would never have to defend, my freedom of speech. Newcastle Town Board, you have drafted a new amendment to the town code regarding protests. This amendment would require a five hundred dollar fee to hold a protest and a special insurance policy that costs, as you said, around three hundred dollars for the day. The current pro protest permit has a filing cost of twenty five dollars, so the cost of free speech before and after the amendment. Goes from twenty five dollars to over eight hundred dollars, I mean, talk about inflation. Essentially, this amendment would make it impossible for anyone but the wealthy to protest, targeting students and working class activists. Of course, it's no secret that this amendment was directly inspired by our ceasefire march on February third. That march was organized by local Greeley students such as myself, not the types of people who are able to dish out eight hundred dollars at the top drop of a hat. Your messaging is clear, you never want progressive youth like us to be able to organize a peace march ever again. But I don't need to interpret what your message is because I can quote you, Jeremy Salan, before the march. You said, the town board doesn't wanna see a quote ceasefire march on any day in the Chappaqua hamlet. You also encouraged the police to deal with us with as mu with as much force as they pleased. Quote, whether that means dispersing people, issuing summonses or taking some other action including an arrest should crimes be committed. That is for law enforcement to decide and potential lawbreakers to recognize. Vicky Tip, before the march, you said in a report, quote, it is with a heavy heart that I am reporting to you that our police chief had to grant the permit this afternoon. Also saying, we were not able to deny this permit, I reviewed the ADL website information about the sponsors with our town attorney and police chief and quote. I have also been in touch with our regional ADL manager who confirmed that we have to grant this permit. You said that it is with a heavy heart I am reporting to you, our police chief had to grant the permit this afternoon. So wow, you really, really tried to stop us from getting this permit, you were grasping at straws, trying every means you possibly could to block the protest permit. But it is with a heavy heart I inform you that the First Amendment exists. And now, since you weren't able to legally finesse or intimidate us into shutting down the protest, you're creating town laws that will make it impossible for us to protest in the first place. This new law is elitist, it is discriminatory, it is authoritarian, it is fascist. And as long as you try to boost fascism onto Newcastle, we are gonna be here digging in our heels protecting our right to protest. Mark my words, the power of the people is more powerful than the people in power. And if you choose to start this fight over our very right to protest, it's not a fight you're gonna win.
Thank you, Cass, um I will say a few words about what I what I mentioned in that social media post, because I think it's important. The con, well, I know that people don't wanna hear it, but if you wanna talk about it, we're going to talk about it and we'll have that conversation. So the march, um the activity that you planned was originally planned for International Holocaust Remembrance Day. I know that you knew that, I had conversations with people who were in touch with you and there was a little back and forth about it, as you know, I don't need to go into that. Um so I did have a heavy heart, people did have that, because the march was planned for Holocaust Remembrance Day.
You wish to make a statement after we've scheduled this November third.
The thus, the environment and the feelings around it had been set, you're correct. That the timing of the march had been moved and and I think people appreciated that, that was a good thing to do, that was the right thing to do. It was not right to try to negotiate it, but I'm I'm making a statement.
I'm happy.
Um because my comment has been alluded to and probably will be in it, and that's fair, it's fair to talk about it, it's also fair for me to to respond to it, so I'm going to. Um I'm not gonna interrupt anyone's public comment, but yes, I had a heavy heart because people had been really traumatized by. The plan to do this on Holocaust Remembrance Day, so I think that cannot be ignored, even though you're correct about the timing.
For the thousands of people that have been killed.
And. Yeah.
As a Jew, I'm traumatized by the actions that we really have.
Yeah, it's very terrible. So in any sense, I will not, I will not interrupt anybody.
I just have people on the microphone.
No, I.
Please phone.
I appreciate civility and I wanna afford civility to every single person in this room, I don't want anyone heckled, I want everyone to have a chance to speak. Um so I think it's important for people to understand the context in which this was presented to the community. And that was a very hard pill to swallow and so people were pretty affected by having had that introduced in that way. So I don't apol I don't apologize for having an opinion, so that's what this is about, we are all entitled to our opinions. Uh you received the permit, gladly so, you did. Uh but you have to acknowledge the context in which this was presented to the community. Um also that was a post, and I I already addressed this in social on social media, but not everyone is on it. I was answering questions that had been placed to me by a lot of people in the group that I was speaking to. Um I received a lot of emails, maybe over thirty, all a lot of them said the same thing. A lot of them asked about, for instance, they asked whether the Ku Klux Klan would be allowed to march. And I answered that question in that same post without explaining why I raised that. But it was in answer to specific a specific question that I received, so I know that that post appeared out of context to a lot of people. But I do want you to understand, I know someone said I compared you to that, I I never did, and that was never my intention. And I just wanna say to you that I'm sorry if if it looked that way to you. Um there were other other aspects about the post and I'm not, you know, a bickering kind of person. There were other things that people objected to that I could answer, I don't even remember what those things were anymore, um. The permit itself, I know that we restricted the permit, it wasn't what you wanted, you wanted to start off at Starbucks and go across the bridge. To the train station and to the gazebo, that would have been really dangerous, so we did we did not want that to happen. Um I know that.
As police force against students dangerous?
I know that, um also, people did object to to barriers that were placed there, we were we placed barriers in the area. To protect the Holocaust memorial with some delicate things that were placed there, we had a field that's covered in the winter, it's really expensive to maintain the field and we didn't want people to walk. On the grass, so that was why the barriers were there, so anyway, I don't wanna talk too much, but I do wanna explain to you why I said the things I did in the post. And what I would really like is for us to come together, I'm always willing to um admit when I'm wrong about something, so I'm willing to talk to you. I know that you have um objections to this law, we're here to listen to that, that's why we're having a public hearing. Um what I would want is for people to come together, uh we have different opinions, but that doesn't mean that we can't listen to each other. We really can and we want to, we wanna come together as a community. So that's uh where I would like to, I know that all of my fellow board members feel the same way, you know, we can throw accusations about what people said, what people didn't say, but I. I just don't think that's helpful, but you're free to make your comments and I won't take up any more time, um.
If I may, very briefly as well.
Sure, yeah.
Uh Cassiopeia, I I appreciate you coming up and saying these things and actually I think you've done a terrific job in advocating, even if I disagree, I'll give you support. I have said that, I mean, you've come up for housing before, um which I happen to agree with you on that issue. I think it's important, and you know, but I say this not in a kind of send away, anyone earns that there's a sort of rule of completeness. And you made a statement that I made about dispersing or arresting or summoning. There were people in the community who were concerned that if there was a march without a permit, if there's a violation of the law, then there should be arrests or prosecutions or something along those lines. And I made it overwhelmingly clear, if you were paying attention to the entire statement, it's not my job as a legislator to tell the police and law enforcement what to do. They will make the decision themselves, if there's anything that I shouldn't be doing up here is using law enforcement to effectuate what I want them to do or not want them to do. So that's why I made that statement, the whole complete statement is very important that you share that because that's not an accurate reflection of the context of that statement. And then in terms of the ceasefire, which I use in quotes, if you recall, um you know, I think you can probably tell, like you, I'm not a wilting flower, I'm not afraid to stand up when I believe in, and that's one thing I admire in you. Um but if I, as a Jewish person, uh am intimidated to walk out of my office one night because I hear the marching and the trumpets and thinking to myself, what if they know I'm Jewish? Because they're saying stuff, and not everybody, even if it's a small portion of the people, one can understand how no, I would not want that in my community. So uh when I use that in quotes, that's exactly what I was referencing, wasn't referencing anything else, that's why I put it in quotes. So I'm glad that you brought it up and it wasn't clear, now it is clear, um but that completeness is also important. If you're going to use someone's statement, make sure you bring in that whole of everything, so thank you for coming up and sharing that.
Okay, um.
Clarissa? It no, I just I I just want to say, I mean, I very much appreciate hearing people's thoughts on this um potential change to the permit, but. Um keep your notes because when the public hearing does open, you're gonna want them on the record, so just uh just to let you know that this is.
Not the public.
Not the public hearing.
That is a good, that is a good point, yeah, okay. Uh Clarissa? Uh, Clarissa Covey, come on up. State your name and your address.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. My name is Clarissa Covey. I live at three sixty five Mila Road in Chapacua. I am disturbed and appalled by the proposed amendments to demonstration policy in this town. While it is lawful in some cases to acquire permits to be granted before rallies held, particularly if that rally is planning to involve sign amplifiers or take place in certain public areas, it is a flagrant violation of the First Amendment to implement a five hundred dollar fee in requirement of a two million dollar insurance policy. Such a rule blatantly prevents students and grassroots organizations from voicing their opinions, reserves the right to free speech for the wealthy, and is unconstitutional. The ACLU says that, quote, "If the permit regulations that apply to your protest require a fee for a permit, they should allow a waiver for those who cannot afford the charge." I have not heard any such waiver be proposed as part of this amendment. Without a doubt, the amendment has been considered as a response to the March for Peace in the gazebo on February third. You are trying to stop any more such protests organized by students or grassroots organizations from happening in Chapacua. You are trying to stifle the voices of young people and anyone who does not have the money to pay for a permit. I am not just concerned about the censoring of my own beliefs, but the beliefs of any young person or anyone who's unable to pay such a fee in this town. The fundamental right to free speech is being threatened. This is a glaring attempt to hold Chapacua to an elitist standard. What kind of message would this communicate about our town?
Okay, Naveen Arjun.
Hello. Uh, I'm Naveen Arjun, I live at seventy three Preston Run in the border. So, as of right now, the town requires twenty five dollar fee to register a protest. But, the board, as far as I know, wants to change it to five hundred dollars. And I don't have an, I personally don't have an issue with having to register the protest with the police or the board, but I have an issue with the fee being required to be five hundred dollars. According to Forbes, CBS, and CNBC, most Americans cannot afford a five hundred dollar trip to the emergency room. And you can, you all can look that up right now, like like I'm not making this up. Most people don't have the kind of money to like organize and pay for this like protest thing that you're doing. According to the American Civil Liberty Union, regulations with financial requirements should include a waiver for groups that cannot afford the charge that even grassroots organizations can exercise their free speech rights. Therefore, a group without significant financial resources should not be allowed, oh my god. Should not be prevented from engaging in a march simply because it cannot afford the charges the city would like to impose. I know that this plan probably isn't finished yet, as you said. And it's not even like a plan yet, but it's a proposal, and you you realistically can't put this into like the law. The working class and students are pretty much the only ones, as far as I know, that are voicing their opinions and protests. And they're doing this in a very safe and simple manner, as far as I know, there's been no arrests or like, you know, like, I I haven't heard any violence. Think, like, think about who benefits from this, like, it's it's not the average person that lives in Chapacua. You're essentially putting a hay wall on freedom of speech, and I believe that this modification to the code is un-American and unconstitutional.
Okay, thank you. Now, what do you know, we didn't, what, is there supposed to be an indigent requirement?
There is a case out of the Southern District, um, that, sorry.
Although we don't know the definition of that, but however,
Yeah, and something we're we'll, I'm looking into with respect to that, but there is a case that talked about that,
it it's something that.
But it went as far into New York as the Southern District, it didn't get to the Second Circuit.
And also, there's a threshold in terms of people.
Okay.
Correct.
So it's not ten people who wanna have a.
Correct, it's fifty or more.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but how how do you know how many people are going to show up?
We don't, we don't, this is not a perfect system. That's a good question, very good. We don't know, that's it.
No, nobody, nobody would know.
Absolutely, that's absolutely true.
It was New York City or or.
Absolutely true, someone someone asked, how do we know if it's going to be fifty or more, the answer is we don't. Okay. We have, uh, Maryam Funtu.
Yes, hi.
Hello, Maryam.
Hello, I have a little prop, an easel and a poster, may I grab it from the?
Yes.
One more.
You'd have to read from it because my laptop is.
Yeah, you might have to, yes.
I know, so I, but I can hold you.
I know you, Maryam, but to treat you the same way, you have to state your.
Absolutely, I'm just gonna sit up for one moment, Mr. Thank you.
Your 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 answer.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great.
Here with you guys for one moment.
You you asked the question earlier regar- regarding uh, is it customary, uh?
Much better.
Yeah, so I think she answered the question.
Thank you. Oh, very good. Wow, thank you.
This is my husband, don't mind him.
Don't mind me.
Okay.
You're in trouble if you don't take that slow.
And well, um.
Okay, Maryam, I I still can't read it because now I need distance glasses on.
Yes, absolutely. With with your permission, town board, may I, I'll read it to you.
Yes.
With your permission, may I turn the post board and present it to our our fellow residents here tonight?
Absolutely.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you so much for giving me this chance to speak, I am Maryam Funtu, twenty four Carver Place in Mount Kisco. I did a little bit of homework for us tonight, uh, and it was wonderful that council brought up the point um, of reasonable comparisons to other towns within our community. So, I went ahead and took the liberty. I may present the bench, please, with a copy of, this is the Osning statue.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sure, you're welcome. I should extract, extract for anyone, do you want to send? Yes, please go ahead.
You can give um, Alice to Jill and we'll we'll get it to her.
Of course. So what I presented you with there is the Osning regulation um, for permits and assemblies. Before I get into that, if I can just turn this around. I'm just gonna hold it. Just gonna hold it.
I'll hold it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So I thought it might be helpful tonight to get a glimpse of how other towns in our community regulate expressive activity. Expressive activity means all forms of non-commercial expression that are protected by the First Amendment to the US Constitution, which may include peaceful assemblies, speeches, protests, picketing, leafleting, circulating petitions, distributing literature, and similar expressive communications and activities. So this is where I need to host. Next time I'll have a PowerPoint.
Your husband's in trouble.
Yes, as usual. So, but I'm just gonna read it, thank you. I promise this will be smooth. Okay, so, if you take a look here at our expressive activity comparison chart. I did some research and I pulled several towns. I started here with Osning because I do believe this is a gold standard for um, protecting free speech, for enabling it, for not having it be unduly burdensome or prohibitive to all citizens. If you take a look here, the permit, there is no permit required for Osning. The sponsor must provide the town supervisor with a written notice forty eight hours in advance of the expected gathering, along with the proposed location, date, and time. There are no insurance requirements. The timeframe is forty eight hours prior to the event. And there are no fees. Moving on to Briar Cliff. Permit required for expressive activity, yes. The sponsor must sign an indemnification and hold harmless agreement. There are no insurance requirements. The sponsor can elect to obtain and keep in force an insurance policy to cover its liability, and I was told by the clerk that that may be their homeowner's insurance policy. The timeframe is seven days from the application of the permit to the event, and the fee here is fifty dollars. Yorktown. Yes, there is a permit required for expressive activity. There are no insurance requirements. And the timeframe is forty five days prior to the requested date. The fees are anywhere from zero dollars to forty five dollars. Village of Pleasantville. No official permit required. The sponsor must email the village administrator with event details, who along with the police chief, will determine permissibility. No insurance requirements. The timeframe is seven days. No fees. Elm Ridge. Yes, there is a permit required, it must be approved by the town board. However, the applicant is given an opportunity to argue in favor of approval by attending the town board meeting when the application will be considered. Insurance requirements, yes. Timeframe, sixty days prior to the event. Fees, fee waivers may be requested and have been granted for all but very large events such as carnivals or events that require trash collection. Just a side note, when I contacted many of these offices, many of the people, the clerks, well-meaning as they may be, had no idea what I was talking about. And had never even been asked a question like this before. So it seems like some of their policies are still being refined, or they may not have known. So there were several phone calls back and forth, and I spoke to many people uh, in each town's uh, board to make sure I got the correct information. So this is really an exhaustive collection of what I was able to gather. Town of Mount Kisco, no permit required. Insurance requirements, yes. The sponsor again can use their homeowner's uh, policy. Approval is almost always granted with appropriate certificate of insurance. Timeframe is for the sponsor to submit the proposal at board meetings, which take place on the first and third Monday of each month. Expedition granted upon request. No fees. And on to our Tony Hamlet of Newcastle. Permit required for expressive activity, yes. Insurance requirements, policy of no less than two million dollars. Timeframe, thirty days of written notice. Fees, five hundred dollars in addition to other fees. Whereas previously for the ceasefire rally on February third, the fee was twenty five dollars. I'm happy to pass this around, you'll have to see it. So clearly, Newcastle's proposed change will not only render the permanent approval process prohibitively costly and burdensome, but will now make it impossible for the Newcastle Police Chief to grant a permit outside of the seven day business window, whereas previously, he had the discretion to do so, given good cause. So this begs the question, can local governments impose a financial charge on exercising free speech rights? Well, of course, any government wishing to impose permit fees and insurance requirements for public gatherings in a public forum should follow the guidelines laid down by the US Supreme Court. Costs that cover actual administrative costs have been permitted by some courts. However, if the costs are greater because an event is controversial or a hostile crowd is expected, such as requiring a large insurance policy that the courts will not permit it. Also, regulations with such financial requirements should include a waiver for groups that cannot afford the charge, so that grassroots organizations can exercise their free speech rights. Therefore, a group with sig- without significant financial resources should not be prevented from engaging in a march simply because it cannot afford the charges the city would like to impose. Does the proposed change include this waiver? That's to be determined. If not, it must. We cannot allow our town board, whether intentional or not, to squelch our First Amendment rights. Lastly, I wish to ask, why now? Why is this proposed change coming on the heels of the ceasefire rally on February third? Is it because some residents were made to feel uncomfortable by the demand for peace and an end to the ongoing genocide? It seems that they would rather stop high school kids from protesting than actually hear what they have to say. Thank you so much.
Tim Clem.
I have a, uh, Tim Clem, twenty five Longview Lane. Uh, I live right down the hallway from Cass. And as her father, I'm very proud of what she did. Um, I'm less proud about how you have rushed this uh, permit rally piece of agenda onto your, onto your busy schedule. I I really wish you had prioritized taking action about the policy that you you discussed earlier, and it seems like you're basically in agreement on the town policy about about raising flags of other countries and and so forth, which to me seems like a a far more important priority. The the event that that Cass and and Melanie organized, um, I was the the one who actually did write the checks for the permit and for the gazebo rental. I paid for those costs, I um, understand the importance of having police involvement and very much uh, appreciated the police's support. I I think that this proposed policy is, as everyone else, I think has said, is is a horrendous idea, a violation of First Amendment rights. And please reconsider it and and throw it out and put it on the back burner, it's a a waste of time. Freedom of speech is far more important than five hundred dollars. Rob, you did a marvelous job of explaining the financial condition of the town. I don't think that the five hundred or the thousand or the six thousand dollars is gonna make a lick of difference in the town's financial well-being. And a policy like this would do obscene damage to the town's reputation to have a policy like this in place. So, as many times as you might impose these fees on these kids, I will be there with my checkbook, as non-wealthy as I am, I will gladly write a check for as many hundred dollars as you're gonna impose on their quote-unquote free speech to give them the 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 opportunity to say what what clearly needs to be said. Thank you.
Okay, Matthew Jacobs.
Uh, Matthew Jacobs, fifty five Dumbo Drive, Chapel, New York. I didn't come to talk about the flag, I didn't know that was on the agenda even, but um, I just um, wanted to give my perspective as a disabled combat veteran that any flag, and this is not, it's it's neutral of any country, I find it offensive. Ukraine, England, Israel, Indonesia, whatever it is. But that's not what I came to talk about. Um, I'm actually not here as a as a um, as an individual, I'm here to represent uh, the Chapacua Meeting of the Religious Society of Friends on four twenty Quaker Road, um, where Quakers, as we are called, have been meeting since founding the town Chapacua in the seventeen thirties. The majority of our members um, and regular attenders live in Newcastle and surrounding communities. Um, and we came to present our comments for your consideration uh, prior to the public hearing in in relation to changes uh, related to the assisted events permitting process. Since probably the most well-known Quaker in this town is the Greeley High School mascot, I wanna provide a little bit of context about us and why our meeting is voicing our concerns about the town's proposed increase in fees and additional procedures required for permitting uh, assisted events. Uh, these so-called assisted events uh, include activities like protest, rituals, rallies, demonstrations, public assemblies, and other forms of collective non-violent dissent or support, uh, which are not only integral to a healthy democracy, but for us, direct expressions of the free exercise of our religion. And that's not uh, unique to Quakers, there are many other uh, religions who practice peaceful uh, forms of engagement. Uh, Quakers believe that there is out of God in all human beings, and that is foundational to our practices, the centerpiece, justice, and equality. Our works and beliefs are heavily influenced by the grave and unfathomable injustice early Quakers faced at the hands of New York's colonial government. In seventeenth century New Ancestralum, colonial governor Peter Stibson, pushed by powerful forces within the Dutch Reformed Church outlawed Quakers from even gathering, um, and also requested that townspeople report them or run them out of town. Quakers defy the order, but more importantly, so did their non-Quaker neighbors, leading to acts of protest and civil disobedience that forfees imprisonment and even deportation. A letter to the tyrannical governor signed by thirty brave souls announcing their refusal to turn on their Quaker neighbors survives to this day and is known as the Flushing Ramonstrance. Its sentiment, eloquence, and importance inspired Thomas Jefferson and James Madison when he penned the First Amendment to the US Constitution. In more contemporary times, Quaker and civil rights leader, leader Bayard Rustin said, "The primary social function of a religious society is to speak the truth to power." And our truth is this. We're deeply concerned about this proposed infringement on our free exercise of religion, emphasis on free, as well as other rights outlined in the First and subsequent amendments to the Constitution. As such, we ask you cease. As such, we ask you cease consideration of a fee increase and other burdens or codify your oath to defend the Constitution by adding an exemption to the permit requirements for First Amendment-related activities. As mentioned previously, this is a step um communities all over the country have already taken, including uh Nextdoor and Austinang, where, you know, no fee is required, no permit is required, given advance notice, and that the assembly meets the only uh requirement outlined in the Constitution and that it is a peaceable, uh the people are peaceably assembled. Um while permits and fees for First Amendment activities have been upheld by the Supreme Court, as has been mentioned, that doesn't mean the town should require them. The fee to exercise our collective rights to assemble and engage in protected speech in forms of religious expression uh in our mind is analogous and equally repugnant as post emancipation poll taxes that disenfranchise voters, particularly newly enfranchised black voters in states all across the country. The Supreme Court upheld poll taxes for decades before they were finally struck down. Thankfully, New York never instituted these immoral unethical poll taxes, but our neighboring states did. Shout out to Connecticut. Less than sixty years uh ago, Mississippi was the last state uh to remove, because of legal action, their poll tax. It was two dollars. That's less than twenty dollars today, which is still less than the twenty-five dollar permit fee required for an assisted gathering in this town today. Just as many places did with poll taxes and permit fees, we urge you to uphold your oath to the Constitution and not make democracy in forms of religious and creative expression a pay-to-play scheme here in Newcastle. Thank you.
Oh Oliver Jacobs. Same last name. Got got confused.
Okay. As Thomas Jefferson wrote, governments are instituted among men, driving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive with these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. The First Amendment states that the rights of the people to peaceably assemble shall not be abridged or denied. I work at a local business. If I wanted to get a permit under the proposed policy, I would have to work over a full forty hour week to net the money created to pay the fares. Creating a system where I have to pay to exercise my rights prevents my ability to freely exercise them. As the Supreme Court has upheld, public school students already have fewer First Amendment rights than the general public. Rights that everyone else everyone else enjoy go out the window the second a student steps onto school property. And here in Chappaqua School District, they punish students for speech and expression that take place outside of their school in their own homes. If our homes are not a place we can enjoy First Amendment protections, and the cost of admissions to our public squares and public forums is too, where should we turn? Should we take to the streets? Statistics show that today's youth are less trusting of public institutions than previous generations and discuss the things like this. We are the youth of America. You are the adults who swore an oath to defend the Constitution. Do it, lead the way, or get out of the ways of the canon. Also, regarding the ADL, I would like you all to know that Roy Bullock, an employee of the ADL, was proven to have sold information on anti-parted activists to South African intelligence. The ADL has honored right-wing figures. Because of the ADL's reputation as a civil rights organization, these awards confer a badge of good work on figures who have often been complicit in or directly responsible for state violence. Some of these include Silvio Berlusconi, the notoriously corrupt sexist Islamist phobic Italian Prime Minister who secured political power through alliances with anti-immigrant populist parties who called Mussolini's dictatorship mild, claimed that he sent people on holiday to an internal exile and denied his role in the Nazi politics. When Italian Jewish communities objected, the ADL did not respond. Cardinal Bernard Law, an anti-woman, anti-gay radical who opposed AIDS treatment and protected priests who sexually abused children. The ADL honored him during the AIDS crisis over the protests of gay activists, then expressed ongoing reverence for him two decades later, shortly after resigning over his role in enabling sexual abuse. Thank you.
I have to say, I never thought the law would be charging students. I suppose we thought they would be charging the parents, but okay, that's not that's not a symptom of comfort, but nevertheless, um
Definitely not.
Okay.
Yes.
Um this is a minor point. Um Arthur Grant.
Arthur Grant, I live on Glen Terrace. I'll be very brief. Three quick points. One, with Maryam and I think some other people have mentioned is, why now? Uh Matthew said Chappaqua's been here for three hundred years. Why now this effort to make it much more difficult, in fact, impossible for some people to exercise their First Amendment rights? Secondly, comparing to farmer's market or um what was it, Community Day, is not a fair comparison, cuz we're talking about First Amendment rights. We're not talking about selling vegetables. Thirdly, if you're going to, excuse me. If you're going to go ahead with essentially making people have to pay for their rights, which means they're not rights, they're commercialized, maybe you should do that for the Nineteenth Amendment as well as the First Amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um Dana Scholl.
I am not tall enough. Hello, uh so it's actually Awana Scholl. Uh it's an odd name, so a lot of people
Awana.
think it's a D.
Yeah, I understand that.
Um I live at forty-one Overlook Drive. Um and uh thank you for hearing me out this evening. Um I don't have written out comments uh per se, but I would like to say, first of all, let me preface this by starting with the fact that um I was born in Romania, and I grew up in a communist society for um the first many years of my life. Um and as a child, I have many, many memories of, you know, being told all of the things that I cannot say, should not say, all of the opinions that my friends or my family held, and the danger to ever saying anything that didn't agree with what everybody else was supposed to be saying. Um so one of the things that I really appreciated about having the opportunity to come here and become a citizen of the United States is this right, this incredibly amazing precious right that we have to be able to speak with each other and against each other, and to be able to say things that other people vehemently disagree with, but we still have the right to just put it out there and have maybe a very passionate discussion, sometimes an angry discussion, but put our opinion out there. Um so in terms of this policy of raising the fees, um I think what makes this town in particular pretty special is that we are a small town. There are a lot of opinions in this town. People have kind of a strong flavor to them, right? Where there's a lot of smart people. They have a lot of smart, very informed opinions, and sometimes we go at each other with these opinions. And that's one of the things I kind of enjoy sometimes about being here. Um I also think we have a nice community feel, and the timing of this, you know, I am I am no expert on law. I am no expert on insurance. I'm a social worker. That's what I do for my job. So I'm not gonna pretend that I know the policies or the precedents or any of that. That's not what I'm here to speak about. Um but I I believe that when things are the most tense and when people are the most afraid and when people are the most angry, is when we actually need to speak and hear each other and not have voices stifled. Because to stifle ourselves is to to not be able to grow from each other's perspectives, you know? Th- this issue that's gripping our world right now, it's more complex than I could ever really understand if I studied for, you know, history for decades. Like it's very complicated and it goes back forever, and it's got so many wrinkles to it. And I think that um to try to make it into anything that is one thing or another and polarize ourselves is just oversimplifying. And we need to hear each other. We need to talk. We need to continue to be neighbors. Um so I urge you, even if there is some financial reason to do this, some fiscal whatever, you know, surely the timing must be looked at. And the fact that it comes on the heels also of young people organizing a protest, that feels kind of disgusting to me, honestly. Like it just feels like, how can we, how can that not be connected? And even if it was totally random on your part, it's going to be seen as connected. And so I think the timing is wrong, and I urge you to just put pause on this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you all. Um we have one more. Um Reverend Emily, can't read the handwriting very well, Emily DiTarr-Britt.
Yes, uh Reverend Emily DiTarr-Britt. Uh thank you so much. Thank you. I wanna just take a minute to breathe and thank everyone here for vocalizing your First Amendment rights and this town board for listening. I know it is hard to serve a community, so I appreciate it tonight. Um I'm Reverend Emily DiTarr-Britt. Uh it's complicated where I live, cuz I actually live in the city. I serve the Unitarian Universal Fellowship of Norman Watchchester, which is at two three six South Bedford Road. It is in Bedford Hills, but a large proportion of my members live in Newcastle. I know several of them who live here. And I know, I also ma- many people don't even know what Unitarian Universal is. It's a large name, and what it essentially is is a group of people who come together to practice religion across many different beliefs. We have those who are Jewish, those who are Muslim, those who are Christian, and those who are atheists, all in the same house. And my goodness, the arguments that we could have with each other. The conversations and the discussions and the differences of opinion are part of the magic of what it is to worship in the creation and image of God together. In that foundation of being holy, sacred individuals and the power of voice. So in that essence and understanding that many of my members who live in Newcastle could never afford this. They couldn't afford five hundred dollars. They couldn't afford two hundred and thirty-two of the insurance to be able to speak out with their voices. It matters that we protect their First Amendment rights. It matters that we continue to be engaged across the differences of opinion that are here to serve our communities together. And it matters to continue to protect our right for speech, whoever you are. This permit will affect those who are Jewish students. This permit will affect those who are of many minorities. This will affect anyone who can't afford this. It's so important to rest on that sacred principle of our First Amendment and to continue to come together across our differences, because that is so needed now. It is needed now in a way it wasn't before, maybe five or ten years ago. We need peace and healing, and so I urge you to put a pause on this. Thank you so much for your
Thank you very much. Um do we have any more cards? Does anyone else wish to speak? Oh, oh yes, thank you Holly. Uh is there anyone online who would who wishes to speak? Uh please raise your hand. Your digital hand.
No hand to raise.
Okay. Okay, well, I think we've had long enough to to know, to do that. Um alright then, thank you very much, everyone, for coming. I appreciate all those who spoke and all those who were witnessed uh witnessed the speaking and uh were here today. Thank you very much. And we do have a public hearing on senior exemptions, so that's coming up too.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're all gonna be seniors one day.
I'm sorry?
We're all gonna be seniors one day, God willing. What do you have to say about the senior exemption?
Yeah, it's a wonder. Uh maybe you know people who've out at that point.
Better than senior exemption.
Seems to be more important.
Seem to be, seem to be.
Good to see you too. Thank thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alright, so n- now we're up to the public hearings. Uh I would like a motion to open the public hearing on the local law regarding low-income senior exemptions and persons with disabilities and limited incomes exemptions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um
Dana?
If yeah, just a brief, just a brief, yeah, we've spoken about this before, but just
Sure, I'll score this off.
You will still have Josh Sherman.
Josh is here too, so um between you, you and Josh.
Okay, just now, I'm gonna try to make make this very quick and brief. So
Yeah, yeah.
we we currently have senior citizen exemption in our code uh regarding, it's in chapter one sixteen. And this has to do with the senior citizen exemption as provided for under Real Property Tax Law, section four six seven. So turning around a bit, but what we did was modify it, uh because again, the under the new regs, what it allows us to do, well, first of all, just to give a a quick overview, this statute allows uh you to use your federal adjusted income, okay? And depending on what that is, to cause a partial exemption and to give it to senior citizens, okay? What the what you're also allowed to do is you're also allowed to include now your any IRA distributions or social security benefits as well. But what was not clear is is that the way the state did it, some some in some instances you opt in, some you opt out. So what we decided to do is make it very clear by local law, which we're allowed to do, that in in your in terms of income, it includes your your federal adjusted income plus your social security benefits, plus any IR IRA distributions. That collectively becomes your income for purposes of whether you can obtain the senior citizen exemption qualification under this chapter. So in a nutshell, that's basically what it is. Josh, anything else you wanna add to that?
No, I think that was a good summation. Uh the same would apply to the people with uh disabilities and low income as well.
Okay, um so I see no one in the audience except for, no, I'm sorry.
Ouch.
I'm so sorry, Martin, that was terrible. I see, you know what I meant. I see no one who would make a public comment. Martin Wilbur is here from the Examiner, and we appreciate you very much, Martin. And you are a person indeed, but what I meant to say, and I know that you you understand, I meant to say, no one is here to make a comment. I'd be shocked if you had a comment. Let's just say. Uh is there anyone online who would like to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. No, no hands are raised. Okay, so now we'll move on to the local law. I like um, well, let me take a motion to close the public hearing for the local law regarding low-income senior and persons with disabilities and limited income exemption.
Right, so but we're gonna keep it open for written comments until Friday at noon?
Yeah, yes, okay. We will keep this um public hearing open for written comments until Friday. What is the exact date?
The first.
Friday, March first at noon. So may I have a motion, please?
Sold.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And may I have a motion to open a public hearing on the local law regarding senior refuse exemptions?
Sold.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So along similar vein, this with this check, what this local law does, it amends chapter seventy-two dash eight uh regarding senior citizen exemptions and for to qualify for a partial uh exemption regarding garbage and refuse, okay? That 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 tax. So what we did, so back in two thousand twenty-three, you you changed your schedule with respect to in the chapter one sixteen that we just did earlier. About two thousand six, the income was about twenty twenty-five thousand or twenty-eight thousand, and it went it went, there's a schedule. That number in two thousand twenty-three was increased, I believe, fifty-two or fifty-eight thousand, Josh? Was that number right?
Correct. The the maximum went from thirty-seven uh three ninety-nine to fifty-eight uh three ninety-nine.
Right, so your your board adopted that new schedule. So what this does is in order, the old the old law said that the income qualification amounts shall be uh equal to two times the amounts provided in one sixteen. That would, the two times amount was based upon the old schedule, which had like a thirty-seven, whatever the number that Josh raised, thirty-seven thousand. So two times that number is what we utilize in order to qualify for that exemption. Given the the new schedule, we thought that two times would be a little bit much, uh given at the current schedule. So we changed that to just saying that the income qualification amounts shall be equal to or exceed the amount provided in one sixteen, which is the new schedule that's that starts in the fifties, and sliced it in quarters. And it's the only change that we're making to this particular chapter.
Okay, thank you. Josh, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, again, I think that was a good summation of it. Uh so this would be a maximum income of fifty-eight thousand three ninety-nine of adjusted gross income. uh last year and all years prior to that, it was total income. Uh and of course, the social security and IRA distributions would stay in for the calculation.
Yeah, good point, Josh Ray. So what we just did in the last local law, now you, this one also applies. You're looking at adjusted gross income, social security benefits, plus IRA distributions to to determine whether or not you qualify for this exemption.
Okay, alright, thank you, Nino. Um so seeing that there's no one in the audience to make a public comment, is there anyone online? Please raise your hand if so. Sorry, what did you say?
No, I'm here.
No one, no hands, okay. Alright, so okay, so may I have a motion to close the public hearing, but leave it open for written comments through March first at noon? Um we may have a motion to close, so close this public hearing on the local law regarding senior refuse exemption.
Sold. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So now we've reached our consent agenda. Um let's see.
Okay, thank you.
No, sorry.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
So I guess we're going to our resolutions.
We have some revised resolutions, or you have, you know, two seconds.
Is there, yeah.
Thank you.
Just number three and number four.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, Holly, would you start?
I move to adopt items one through nine as listed on the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second, sorry.
Okay, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 I move to approve the payment claims in the amount of one million one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents. Twenty twenty-three expenditures totaling four hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And twenty twenty-four expenditures totaling six hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Listed on the summary, pre-check writing report, and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Joshua Marrero to position a fourth grade police officer with the Newcastle Police Department at an annual salary of eighty thousand uh nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents effective March eighth, twenty twenty-four, for the date the Westchester Camp, pardon me, for the date Westchester County approves the resignation reinstatement.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is this sixty-eight hundred? Is that the is that the total number? Fill in the blank.
Uh there's a new number three on this sheet. She just gave us.
Um We have, go go to three.
Oh, I was trying to see if it's, sorry, let's exceed fifteen, okay.
There we go.
I move to approve the expenditures related to the solo walking tour, virtual tours, traveling pop-ups, and train station kiosks as prepared by Nexus Creative for the total amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jen, you wanna take the last one?
I move to accept the proposal for general municipal legal services and tax SRT or
Social area.
Yeah, that. Matters from Bleakley Platt and Schmidt LLP, as well as accept the proposal for for labor matters to Lance Klein, Esquire from Keenan Bean, in adherence with their proposals as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Just a just a ministerial note, um we just wanna uh add the White Plains address for Bleakley Platt.
Yeah, we have three offices, but mostly we do the work at White Plains, it's all, it's not legal.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's fine.
So the address for Bleakley Platt and Schmidt is one Blue Hill Plaza, Pearl River, New York, one oh nine six five.
And also one North Lexington Avenue, White Plains, New York, one oh six zero one.
White Plains, New York.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, and we voted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Yep. May I have a, made the motion, made a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Ali, thank you for joining us.